And you are live.
Ready? Okay, I call the Monday, March 11, 2024 Boardwork Session to order. Roll call, please.
Lizinski?
Here.
Pernot?
Here.
Kraft?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Mr. Fanuca is unable to attend this evening.
And we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, with the stance one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our mission statement, we educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. And our vision statement, the Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered learning environment. Our districts will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven, continuous improvement through our strategic planning process and tangible results. Okay. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see some friendly faces. Um.
And move to approve the agenda.
Yes, yeah, I was just gonna ask, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kraft?
Yes.
Pernot?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and now we turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Goggan, for the State of the Schools.
Wonderful, thank you. I'll wait just a moment, and Mr. Hopkins is going to pass me that keyboard once I get started, once he gets that all set up for me. You're good? Awesome. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hopkins. I'm really excited to give the State of the Schools this year, just feeling inspired. I recently attended the State of the City with Mrs. Lizinski. I thought her mayor did a wonderful job, so it's really nice to get this started today. I think what's also nice about being able to do a State of the Schools for our school district is we're starting from such a strong position in the first place. We live in a wonderful community with wonderful families, wonderful students, as well as staff members, facilities. We just feel like we're really blessed here in the Westlake City Schools, and we're excited to tell our story. I have to start with our support organizations. When we talk about our wonderful families and our wonderful community, each of these organizations contribute to what makes us special. Not only for what they do, but also the community that they build. Westlake Educational Foundation just completed a car raffle, generating money not only for the educational foundation, but also for the other support organizations. So that was something that was great. Our PTA, this Friday, Demon Derby, no, not Demon Derby, Dollars for Scholars. This Friday is the upcoming Dollars for Scholars, which is always a lot of fun as well. Demon Athletic Boosters, that's when the Demon Derby, and I know Mrs. Lizinski reserved us a table, which we appreciate. Music boosters, we just had O M E A happen, and I think, Mrs. Pernot, were you at the preview as well?
I wasn't at the preview, but I was helping out.
But it was Barb, you were at the preview.
I was helping out.
And then our alumni association just announced a new group of Hall of Fame inductees. So great organizations do a lot for our schools, so we need to start with acknowledging them as well. Everything we do, we try and be student-focused, and this is a slide that I used last year, and it's something from our previous Behind the W, where we have the students in the middle because that is the center of what we do. But all of this stuff, whether we're here at a school board meeting or inside the buildings, at the end of the day, we want students to have the opportunities, the opportunities for them to learn, to grow, to really develop into who they're going to be. And so when we look at hiring teachers, when we look at building facilities, all of these things happen at the end to provide opportunities for students. So, let's see here, when we look at the opportunities, I want to highlight a couple of opportunities that are upcoming into next year, and I put the Westlake High School course catalog there because these are specific to the high school. We're opening a new internship experience, AP Economics, music, AP Music Theory, Digital Media Production, Sports Journalism, and I'll get into the MEMS welding in a moment. Internship experience is something that's brand new. One of our goals, one of the things we want to do is we want to get our students out into the community. We believe that the Westlake community has a lot to offer, business-wise, experience-wise, and we want to get our students out. The class is going to start with building soft skills, you know, resumes, interviews, and you know, those type of things that help you get a job and maintain a job. And then they move into, and we're going to try and get students out, getting experiences within our community. So we're really excited to see how that develops. We think it's a good thing, and we'll see how it grows. The other one I'll point out is digital media production. This is a nice one as well, and this is more of an empowerment of students. If you notice in our rotunda, there's now video displays hanging up. If you notice when you go to a basketball or volleyball game, you'll see a video scoreboard in the scores table, I'm sorry, video display board in the scores table. And we want our kids to create content, content that's going to be pushed out that their fellow students will see, and they'll be able to develop themselves. The last one I'll point out is when we look at the MEMS and the welding. Another theme you're going to see in this particular State of the Schools is I do want to follow up on items from the State of the Schools from last year. And if you recall, I had a slide, it was the picture of the governor, and we were saying that we, as a consortium, were going to attempt to get grants from the government's, the governor's vocational initiatives. Well, we targeted two, we, as a consortium, targeted two programs, one is MEMS, and if you recall what MEMS is, it's like a micro soldering. And so they'd be soldering of the microchips, really big, as Intel's coming in town or to the state of Ohio as well. And also welding, we wanted to be able to expand to more career-based programming as well. And welding was something that we consistently heard, not only was it need in the state of Ohio, but it was something that was attractive to students in our area. Really excited to say that Westshore was awarded over $5 million in grants to launch both of those programs. And they're on our list, and it says they're 2425 catalog, they will not be open next year because they do need to build those labs. So we're hoping that they're open the next year, if not, definitely the year after. So those are some great opportunities. Another one, just because the timeliness of it, I have to mention another opportunity that is back online, and it's not an academic in a sense of this, but our elementary choir concerts, they just held second grade choir concerts for the first time after school, you know, since we've opened our new school. And I heard that they went wonderful, and so we're excited about bringing that opportunity back as well. Another opportunity that kind of grew from the middle school to the high school. We started off, and if you, this is another item that was in last year's State of the School where we said we wanted to develop this. We had the Bernison Brew, Emma McQ and her team developed the Bernison Brew, and actually, Emma McQ, Brad, was a teacher in Fairview, and they started a brew cart there. And so then, when Emma came over, she said she wanted to do it here as well, and they were literally working off like a media center cart. And we then invested into her cart, and now she has one with an umbrella, and I get it, it's inside, you don't need an umbrella, but it still kind of looks cool, and it looks more official. I agree. So they have that, right? You know, logistic, I get it, you know, but, and then we had a local business that volunteered and donated to put the graphics on. So I think it looks really cool with the Bernison Brew there. But as the students were building their skills, we didn't have anything at the high school to transition into. I have Jane Perry here tonight, she worked with the teachers, and they had a lot of discussions, you know, what did they want to do? Did they want to stick with coffee? Did they want to try a different type of thing? You know, we talked about possibly t-shirts, or yeah, and that, and they felt that sticking with what they were doing at the middle school and moving in, moving that to the high school would probably be best for the students as well. So opening this year is our Demon Brew, which I believe that is some sort of a strawberry akai, or is that how you pronounce it?
Asi.
Asi, okay, I'm not, I'm not as, I don't do those, but I hear that they are delicious, and that is up and running as well. So that's another fun opportunity for our students as well. Now, the other part that we have, opportunities are great, but you generally want to see outcomes, right? You know, and tangible outcomes, things that you can measure. When we do look at the State of Ohio report card, and you look at us over the past two years as they've transitioned into the STARS, into the Yelp review of schools with the STAR program there, you'll see in 2022, in achievement, gap closing, achievement and gap closing, we had five stars, progress, graduation, early literacy, four stars. In 2023, we had five stars in achievement, gap closing, and then we went from four stars to five stars in early literacy, and maintained the four stars in progress and graduation. We were really, we don't, so we don't hang our hat on the report card. We know that the community looks at it, and you know, it's nice to see that your school district is achieving a five-star rating. Like, we're not upset that we achieved five stars, but you know, we look at a lot of our internal data and what we're seeing inside the school district because ours is more detailed. This is really a one-day snapshot for a particular test taken. But when we look at early literacy, this is one that we were really happy to see because we had a lot of people working really hard in this area. This was something that, especially coming out of the pandemic, that, you know, we really wanted to hit literacy and make sure that we were closing gaps in there. So when we were excited to see that, that the work of a lot of people really paying off, going from that four stars to five stars. In fact, this year, so the third grade reading test is the only test in the state assessment system that students take twice a year. So the students will take a fall third grade reading test, and then they'll take a spring third grade reading test. This fall, we actually had, you know, more students pass the the fall assessment in third grade than we had in past. So that was something that, you know, as you're trying to close that gap after COVID, to see that go up to that level was really exciting. Now, we did go back a couple of years prior to the opening of the elementary school, so we do have a couple of years of data from our neighborhood buildings. We don't have back too far because the states did switch systems, and the fall test is not something that they put on the report card. So as far back as we can go, this year was a really good year for that. So that kind of stuff excites us as we look at that. So one item that I want to point out before I switch from the report card is graduation. We don't believe that we're, you know, when we look at the four star, that's something we really want to be, a school district that, you know, we are at the five star in the graduation rate. This is something that, you know, when we see the data over the past few years with graduation rate, you really see that we dropped down in 2021. And, you know, we could say it was probably attributed to the pandemic, but either way, we knew we had to get better. And so that was another target that the high school team, Mr. Wilson, really focused on. And one of the things you can see is that we did drop in 2021, but you also saw it go up over the next two years after that. So based on the data that we have now, we do believe that next year, we will, or this year, we will see that go from four stars to five stars when that information comes out. And just so you know, when, as I'm going through this, it's interactive. If you want to stop and ask me a question, just please, you know, give me a little signal. And to Mr. Hopkins and my directors who are out there, if I make an error or misspeak, just, you know, give me the high sign, and I'll pause and feel free to correct me, I would not be upset.
Will you share with the community the reason for a four star and what's going to make you a five star, or Westlake City Schools a five star?
In graduation rate? Yeah, so they take the past two, well, the four-year average and the five-year average of graduation, and then they average that out, and we have to be over 96.6? 96.5, so we had to be over 96.5, and we believe we're past that threshold.
Thank you.
So the other, the next component that I want to hit on, which is a point of pride for our schools and our community as well, are the facilities. And when we look at a high school, and actually, Mrs. Lizinski talked about this when we were interviewed by our students from WHBSTV. Our middle school and our high school was built right around the same time, so both of those are just over 10 years old. Our elementary school is right around five years old, and Dover Intermediate School is our oldest building. And it's also been the one, rightfully so, has received a lot of our attention over the past few years. So I do want to touch on, the next thing I want to do, and this is a slide from last year, and we spoke a little bit earlier when we were being interviewed about the playground, and this is something that came up. This was a slide from last year, and one of the things that I like to do, and you know, the definition of credibility is when you tell people you're going to do something, and you do it, and then you do that over and over again, then they start to look at it and say, okay, well, there's a pattern here, you know, they say they're going to do something, then they do it, and then they say they're going to do something, and they're going to do it. So generally, you can start to assume that when we say we're going to do something, we do it. That's why I kind of like to bring this stuff back up. So last year in the State of the Schools, I said, one of the things that we're targeting is this playground. These are stock photos that were from the company that, because it wasn't built yet. So those are the stock photos of what we were hoping the playground would look like, and here's the playground today. So you can see that, you know, I chose the pictures last year that also had the green because we knew we were going to go with green as well, and you can see that that is up and running. Another project that we had in our insights that we talked about in the State of the Schools last year was the softball and baseball renovation program. You see on the project, I mean, you see on the left is the softball field with the full brown-skinned infield, and then on the right, you see the baseball field being displayed there. Here's what we have today. So when you go back and forth, and you look at the drawings and the plans, and then what we have today, just another thing that was planned on, and we're really excited about that project as well.
The fields look super, and when the students' teams be able to begin playing on them.
They've already started.
Awesome.
Yeah, so they've been practicing since?
The beginning of the week, they started practicing.
Excellent.
So we're on it.
Any remarks about it?
So far, the softball team loves it. I've been there several times, and they just.
Mr. Lamb, do you have insight?
I do, they do love it, and their first scrimmage slash game is on Friday night.
Oh.
At 5:00 PM, the JV, and 7:00 PM, the Mercy.
Oh, so you can go for softball and hop in for Dollars for Scholars?
So one of the things that I want to point out, and this is something, because I know board members, you may be asked this question, and also people are watching this, this video. We do, this will be open to our community, and that's a question that we're asked. Is this going to be available for community use, for city leagues? Yes, you know, we are a great partner with the city, and we want to make sure that we're sharing our space. I put an asterisk by that because this year, we are going to limit. One of the things that I'll point out, and let me see if I can use the cursor here, good. So if you look up, I'm on the right-hand side if you can't see my cursor. But if you see this area right here in foul territory, and if you look on the softball one, you see that, that's straw. And so we are trying to grow grass. And also, you can't see it too well, but when you look at between, the transition between the turf and the outfield, we did put sod in. And so what we will likely do is until our sod and our grass really take root, we will let people play on it, but we have people wanting to run multiple practices and do things like that. So there may be some limitations the first year. It's not because we don't want people to utilize it, but we do want it to really take root so that after this first year, we can open up a lot more.
May I ask you to speak to the security of the fields?
Yes, right now, I think Mr. Kosovar does have padlocks on there? And is the sign still up saying, don't use it?
I do have signs up.
Okay. So that's the security.
And that'll probably be extended into perpetuity, right? If I want to, or a group wants to just show up and play in those fields in the future, will they be allowed to do so? Will we limit that?
Go ahead.
So we will have the fields locked, we will have signage up shortly that will say fueled by permit only. They could contact the high school, we'll be able to get them on a schedule, and whether they're a for-profit or maybe not for profit will depend if there may be some cost.
Nice. Security, say, in the evenings, do we have cameras on the fields as well?
We do have cameras in the back of the high school. We can see when vehicles are driving back and forth back there as well, so we will be able to help monitor that.
Super, thank you.
So what's upcoming? What are we going to be talking about next year? Well, first thing is, as I mentioned before, we are looking at upgrades to Dover Intermediate School. This spring break, which is coming up at the end of this month, we did purchase three new rooftop air handlers. We did utilize Esser's funding to purchase those. We've, the supply chain isn't as big of an issue as it was in the past, but at the time for these particular ones, they didn't come in in time for us to install them before the school year started. So they've been in the Ohio area since right around the beginning of school, and we're finally going to be able to install them over spring break. And to put it in perspective, there are probably about 11 rooftop units on top of Dover Intermediate School. And over the past five or six years, we've been able, if you include these three, we're going to have replaced eight of the 11. So it is a significant upgrade to that system. Classroom technology, Dr. Zagre's here, and he and his team will be working hard with doing a classroom technology upgrade this spring break, which they probably will not be able to complete everything and extend it into summer. This is one that Mrs. Pernot's very proud of, which she should be.
The million-dollar lady?
The million-dollar lady. And so this was something, and I will share the story where Mrs. Pernot lives near the high school. And with that hailstorm, was in a position, I think, you know, new siding and new roof due to that damage. And then she contacted us and said, well, what about the high school? Because I live right by the high school. So I called Mr. Kosovar, and he and his team went up, and they're like, we really don't see anything, we see a couple dents here and there. And then, you know, I call Mrs. Pernot, and then she's, she's like, are you sure? And I'm like, I'll go back to Dave, and I go back to Dave, and it's like, Dave, can you do something? He goes, I'll bring in the claims adjusters, right? We'll bring them in and just kind of see what happens. So, okay. So he brings in the claims adjusters, and they do their magic, whatever it is they do, and then we get notification saying that we qualify for a complete shingle roof replacement. Now, when you look at our high school, about 50% is shingled and 50% is flat roof. And so really, and to the tune of $895,000 of shingled roofing.
And you're up to that?
And then $58,000 towards mechanical equipment up there. And so when you factor in Mrs. Pernot's EPA grant, you know, she's over a million dollars in that funding, so we have to think of a good million-dollar nickname for Mrs. Pernot. Now, but on a, but on a serious note, with this, this is a huge deal for us, you know, because one of the things that we've really tried to do, but it's been a struggle to do because of trying to catch up from previous projects with our permanent improvement money, because we've only had the permanent improvement money since 2016. So this is really big for us because we want to set aside every year, and it's really hard to when you get more and more needs coming in. This helps us because it now takes that shingled component and resets the clock. So we've been in that building for about a decade. What this does is it then pushes out the need to replace that shingled part of the roof another decade. And when you just heard how much it costs, $895,000, that's a lot of money. And so that's a really, really big deal for us. The last thing I'm going to mention is we are going to apply for state capital grants, Mr. Lamb. So if you know anybody who, you know, can really consider our grants, that would be wonderful. And we are targeting three areas, back to the DIS theme that we have. The first thing, we're going to ask for three things in these capital grants. We do know some school districts who've gone for these capital grants and really haven't been successful, but we're going to try anyway. And we are targeting three areas with what we view being the highest priority to the lowest priority. So we're setting our number one priority to be some sort of vestibule entryway for Dover Intermediate School. When you look at the high school, the middle school, the elementary school, there are two forms of entry. So you have to, you know, check in on a radio and be buzzed in two times before you are inside the building in the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. When you look at Dover Intermediate School, there is one entrance, so there's really one door that you buzz into. So our first thing we're going to request, our first project is going to be building a vestibule at Dover Intermediate School. Why? Because we always say the number one priority of our schools is safety of our students and staff. So we are setting that for number one. Number two, we are going to ask for renovation of the PAC. We're going to go for that. We believe that it's not only something that we use as a school, but it's also being used by the community. You see, you know, you guys went to the heritage, I mean, there's, you see, there's a lot of organizations that utilize that. It is a big community usage area, so we are going to apply for that as well. And then the third component is to apply for a renovation for the field house. And so if, you know, looking at the vestibule, the PAC, and the field house, we may get none of those, we may get all of them, we may get one of them, we don't know. And but we're going to go for it and kind of see what happens there.
What exactly needs to be done in the head?
We believe it's going to be like a full, like an update, like, you know, just going in and updating everything.
I mean, new seats and everything too, or?
Is that what's, yeah.
Yeah, we, like, you see fabrics, you keep the seat structure and swap out the backs and the cushions, so it'll be a lot of that.
Technology, speakers, walls, some, some sure sound, carpet, just everything that would make that.
The PAC is 25 years, 20 years old?
It's 19 years old.
19 years old, okay.
Any other questions? Awesome. So back to facilities, I thought this, so when I was putting this together, what's great about doing a State of the Schools, and you start to talk about these different things, you can move these slides anywhere. Because, and then trying to create that order in how they connect, and you'll see when I talk about value and funding, I do push some of that towards the end as well. I don't, I kind of split it up a little bit. I put athletics by facilities, you know, because as we're talking about baseball, softball, and doing that, I thought it'd be a good time to kind of get into talking about athletics a little bit. So, so far this year, we've had eight conference championship teams and a bunch of state-level recognitions in boys golf, girls tennis, girls soccer, with Jesse Mino being second team All-State. Um in boys golf, girls tennis, uh girls soccer um with uh Jesse Mino being second team all state. And boys cross country and girls cross country, the state qualifiers that we had. Um in cheerleading, our cheerleaders participated in the OHSAA Spirit State Championships at Wittenberg University. Recently, uh this winter, girls diving with Nadia finishing sixteenth in the state and even this weekend. Um uh Chase uh is a state qualifier and Brad placing seventh in the state. I don't know if you're aware of that, but we did have. One of our wrestlers placed in the top ten this past weekend, um which is really fantastic. So. There's been a lot, there was a lot of success um as we we look at our fall and our winter seasons. And with the weather getting better and opening up our new fields, we're also really looking forward to um. Our um. Spring season as well. I also wanted to throw this out there and I don't know if the board um noticed this or or saw this in the news. But the OHSAA has realigned some divisions. So for example. Um. If uh. Let me go over to my next slide. So in football, we are, we're division two. So they'll they'll put us in divisions for the state playoffs and. Um. They didn't make it. There's, there's two reasons. That, two things I want to talk about on here. What the state did is they didn't do it in every sport. So they selected certain sports and and said that division one is too big, right? There's, there's too many schools inside there. And and it and it creates this um lack of parity where where you have, you know, significantly smaller schools playing significantly bigger schools. So in some of the sports, they really tried to change that. Now. What I put here is this is our current conference with Bay, Buckeye, Lakewood, Normandy, North Homestead, Rocky River and Valley Forge. What's nice to see is is these are the projected divisions and I want to be clear with this. The official. Division placements are not out. They have not been released. These projections don't, were done by our athletic department at the high school. So this is Nick Ranallo based on the information that he has. This is where he believes you're going to see each of these schools fall. So Bay will have some division one um uh um teams and then all the way down to division four. Buckeye probably two to four. Lakewood's probably going to stay in the one to two area because they are a bit larger. And then your Palmer schools with Normandy and Valley Forge, they're going to stay one because they did close Parm up and then made these schools even bigger. But then when you look at um schools like North Homestead, Rocky River and Westlake, we're going to fall between one and three. And what I like about this. Is when you look at our current conference, the parity that's in there. So it is something where we're really in a conference that when you look at the 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 OHSAA division alignments. We're really going to be um structured pretty well. Now, the other thing I want to point out is. This really could impact some of our schools in their playoff runs. Uh so for example. In boys and girls soccer. Um we have been competing in division one. That's what I thought. So we've been compete competing in division one in boys and girls soccer. Based on what Mr. Ronaldo is looking at, he believes we may in in the playoffs in the future be division three. Um and in girls and boys uh basketball. Um we've been division one and he's forecasting to be. Potentially division three. And then in baseball softball. We've been division one and um he's forecasting division three. So what does that mean? So when you look at boy soccer, we uh one year got knocked out of the playoffs by Medina. That probably has twice as many kids in their high school than we do. Uh then, you know, in boy soccer, we got knocked out by St. Ignatius. That would likely be division one, right? So we would not, so some of these schools that are significantly larger than us that have been knocking us out of the playoffs. Um we will not be facing. So in some of these, so not only, so I guess what I really like about this and the reason I put this slide in this way is. We're in a conference where we can compete, you know, we are aligned. You know, when you look at the projected divisions that uh the other teams in our conference are in. We're, we're where we should be and we we should be, you know, competing for these conference championships. And then when we get to state playoffs. We're also going to be in a better position to move forward in that as well. So go ahead. Do you have a question?
When are they projecting for this to?
Isn't it next year? Oh, this upcoming fall, right?
Really?
Yep.
Hmm, yep. Do they know when? Okay.
Yeah.
I was from Medina and we never want to sing.
Yep. So I thought that was interesting to look at. So what I want to do now is now we'll get into uh the value component of this. So this is something that in the new behind the W, that's actually, we have a final draft on that I can share with you. Um. You've seen. We've done this in charts before where it kind of looks like a spreadsheet where we have um school districts from. Kioga County, Lorraine County, Summit County, kind of uh listed out. And then we started talking about it and we decided to then present it in this format because when. When people make a decision that they're going to live in northeast Ohio and then say, we're not only going to live in northeast Ohio, but we want to be in this section of northeast Ohio. Where they're going to buy a home in Westlake, Avon, Avon Lake, Bay Village, Rocky River, Fairview, North Homestead, Ridgeville, Homestead Falls, as they're looking in this area. Well, you know, the question could be, how do we compare? Millage wise to our neighbors. And so what this is showing here, this is millage that goes towards education. Um and the reason I put it with through education is this is the millage that will go to your public schools. As well as to your career center or joint for vocational school. Now, in this situation, with Westlake Bay Village and Rocky River, all of that money goes to their public school. And the reason is the way we pay. For our vocational consortium is out of our general fund. So there's not a separate tax or millage on our community to do that. Um in the other communities. There is a separate tack tax. So when you look at that um thirty-eight point eight two in Avon Lake. All of that is not going to Avon Lake, probably about two and a half or some.
I think Larry Hammond is just two mills.
Right, it's two. So two of those mills are likely going to um their JBS. Now, one of the things that I like uh about the way that we're doing this is JBSs and career centers can put on levies. Right? I mean, they can come out and say, we're going to put a levy on the ballot. And you can have your community not vote for it, but the other communities that go there may pass it. And then so that millage can then be assessed to your community, even if it failed within your community. So I I like the way that, you know, we in Westlake Bay Village and Rocky River do this. Uh because it truly is the community millage that we're looking at. And then when you compare us, so the other number on there where it says one thousand fifty-one oh five for Westlake. That's the amount of money per hundred thousand dollars. So if you, you know, say that my my house is worth two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. You then would obviously multiply it by whatever uh factor that you had indicated. So um. But that's per one hundred thousand dollars. And I like showing it this way. Because. This is significant. When you look at the thirty mills for Westlake, the closest one to us is uh Avon Lake, who's nearly thirty-nine mills. But also, when you look at the previous slides, again, in the state of the schools, all these slides are connected in some way. Where I'm talking about our facilities. You know, and and when you look at Avon Lake, I think they had put up. Over a hundred million dollar type of bond issue at almost eight mills. Well, that that's probably coming, how many mills was that, Paul? Was it eight? So almost about eight mills. So if that ends up passing, that thirty-eight is going to be forty-six really quickly. And so the great thing about our thirty mills, that's thirty mills with. Not passing a um an operating levy since two thousand six. That's thirty mills with having. Three out of your four buildings either right around ten or years old or less. You are getting a lot in those thirty mills that some of these other communities aren't getting. And so I think that's why this is really relevant and the the discrepancies, even when you cross the border, you know, from from Westlake into North Homestead. When you're looking at a thousand fifty-one um uh per, you know, per hundred thousand and in North Homestead, you're looking at. Nineteen hundred dollars, you're almost looking at twice the amount that you're you're looking at there. Um so we thought this was a good way to look at it.
Yeah, I like it.
And.
It's a great visual.
Yeah. Any questions on this before I switch?
I think you should highlight Westlake. Green.
In green, green works, there it is. Um are you going to take a picture? Are you done? Are you good? Okay. All right. So here's the other thing I want to get into. So why? You know, when we talk about value. You know, why? It do, are we seeing the millages the way we are? First and foremost, we got to look at our city. Um we got to give uh credit to our mayor and our city council. Um they have the approach that. We can't underestimate. The benefit. That we as a school district get. Due to the way the city has approached growth. There's no question about it. The way that they've uh balanced um wonderful homes and communities with retail. The way that they've, I and actually, I'm not even joking. When I, when I talk about building commission, Brad. You know, the the work that that you guys have done there and and with our building department there to where our growth has been. Very linear and stable. We are not a community. That you see this huge peak to where you see hundreds, you know, homes being built and. You know, it's overwhelming the schools and then you get this huge influx at first and then it would go down later. That's not what the city has done because they have planned so well. And did it the way they did it. It's really allowed us to be able to plan what we do as well. So. First thing we have to do is we have to acknowledge the great work um that our city's doing. We also take some credit too. You know, just because we were put in a good situation. Um uh doesn't mean, you know, if we were put in a si- situation that there was no way we can mess it up, right? You know? So um we do have over twenty years, o- over twenty consecutive years receiving the state auditor's award. Uh Mr. Hopkins, his team that he has in the treasurer's office do a wonderful job. Uh being um strong and responsible stewards of our money. Um management of resources, this is another one that I don't think can be um underestimated or or undervalued as well. And I'll give you an example. Um uh so back in in two thousand, in between two thousand and thirteen and fourteen. Um. There was a reduction in uh salary and benefits. And the reason I target salary and benefits is in a school district, your number one. Um uh. Expense is salary and benefits. That's what we do. You know, we we have, we have people who work with kids. So there was a drop from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen in spending. And uh that was great, you know, so the district cut back at that time, but what we're proud of. Is. We did not. Pass that two thousand thirteen salary and benefit mark until twenty twenty-two. So yes, that was dropped at that point in time, but through the management of what we were doing, we did not pass that twenty thirteen. Um salary and benefits mark until twenty twenty-two. And that's with, you know, managing staff, making sure um that that we're we're paying appropriately and all those things as well. So it's not like we said, hey, we have a cracker park, let's just start spending money. So that didn't happen within there. The other part is utilization of grant opportunities. Earlier, I did talk about. How those air handlers are being put on uh Dover Intermediate School. We used Essers funds. So the other thing I would say is open the newspaper and kind of see. What's happening to school districts, some school districts in our area as these Essers funds are going away. You know, you're seeing massive cuts, you're seeing fiscal cliffs, um you're seeing all these things happen. We tried from the start. I remember sitting in the meeting and saying, you know, how are we going to manage this money? What are we going to do? And and uh you know, with Amanda, Paul, Jane and and everybody kind of pulled together to make sure. That we did add staff. We knew we were going to add staff, but we didn't do it in a way. That if we had to keep that staff, it was going to break us financially. So it was an addition, but it was um a sustainable addition. You know, I mentioned Dr. Zagre again, where we launched our one-to-one initiative. It was able to kickstart the Essers funds. Were were able to kickstart um the the uh one-to-one initiative. So we did utilize it in a way where we 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 were using it for some staff. Uh but it wasn't something where it was staff only. And and we think as we're coming out of this with this funding needing to be spent um by this upcoming September. Um we're not going to be in a position where we're like, what are we going to do type of thing? So we're really proud of the utilization of grant opportunities. Matter of fact, Paul walked in my office today. And said, hey, I wrote a safety grant. I didn't know I was going to get. I got another fourteen thousand dollars to put towards um flock. So, you know, we're consistently trying uh to utilize that as well.
That that goes towards Paul's.
Yeah, it's not eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. But um. But. So then the other part, when we looked at, this is, this is something that even when I talk to people in the community, a perception in the past, whether it was reality or not. Was that, you know, the schools weren't taking and taking care of um our our facilities and those kind of things. Um that is something that Dave Kosovar and his team have done a great job with. Um whether it's something as simple as uh ceiling, um the parking lots, you know, but he also has a system in place. Where um ever, is it every month, Dave? Yeah, so monthly, um our our um uh uh building level teams, custodial teams get a checklist. Here's, you know. Replace the filter, do this, do this. And so they'll have a series of maintenance tasks that they need to do. So it's very well organized and um. And and really uh um thoughtful i- is that as well.
So just keep, keep the shrubs trimmed by the elementary school sign, so I don't get.
There you go.
They want to see what's going on. I think that's what's good.
Well, and that's another Mr. Wilson thing. I love the fact that he took that on where every, you know, he programs that H week. Because, you know, the building level people, you know, especially at the elementary school, they're swamped with things. And Paul sits down every week and looks at the um different newsletters that come out and and he, so when you look at what's hap- what's being posted at the elementary school, that's Paul. Um the final thing I'll point out is our partnership with our labor organizations. The Board of Education just approved um a contract. With our teachers association. Um, you know, we believe that, you know, as we've gone through, and I think that was probably the fourth contract, third or fourth contract. That that we've been able to sort of negotiate. With our labor organizations and they've been wonderful. You know, they're, they're very good at um advocating, you know, for their members. But but in a way that's reasonable and 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 so we really appreciate, we believe that they're benefiting from these and we are as well. Um we are probably in the first or second week of April, uh going to be sitting down with our classified union, our Opsy. Um so that will be getting uh started as well. So. This is the big question. I did steal this slide. I will recycle a couple of slides because I like them. Um this is from last year in regard to, because this is a question that that people ask us. What are you doing uh to to keep students safe? Just to, when you look at the the checklist on the right. Not going to go too deeply into these because we talk about them quite a bit, but I will put some of these things on the list. Um yes, we have school resource officers, social workers, a nurse on each campus. I will tell you, that is not common. You know, many school districts have one nurse and that nurse goes from building to building. Um when we look at that. Um we do have students with significance, significant disabilities, significant medical needs. Um you know, nut allergies, all these type of things that. We think it'd be best um uh while we can, you know, there may be a time where we we won't be able to keep that luxury. But right now, we do have a nurse on each campus, which we really like. With our counselors, secured entries, I talked about license plate readers. Gaggle is one I'm going to talk about, you know, really briefly here. Gaggle is a program. We are a Google school, so Google Classroom, Gmail. Um uh this is actually um. Uh what's the the Google doc? Is it? No, Google. Slides? Okay, so it is Google slides. So we use Google slides and so um what gaggle does is gaggle. Um kind of over overlooks our. Um Google sys- our Google platform. Not everybody's Google platform, but the Westlake City School's Google platform. So when a student's on one of our Chromebooks, in our email, um on our slide decks and those kind of things. Uh gaggle is scanning it for questionable content or things they call possible student situations where a student. May send uh uh an email or put on a slide deck that they're thinking about harming themselves or something like that. Or if there's profanity threatening behavior, that's all scanned. So that's all all scanned within the Google platform and gaggle does that. And I honestly don't even know. How you would run a one-to-one initiative or run a platform like we run without having that place. I do think it's that important. School Gate Guardian is. I do think it's that important. School Gate Guardian is the system that we use. When people come in and we scan um their driver's license, we'll scan their driver's license and it'll run it through the sex offenders database. Um, and also any type of alerts that we've built in uh as well. Could be custody issues, it could be restraining orders. Um, we were able to self-load things as well. Um, the reason I have the picture there, the last one being bus stop arm cameras. Um, I added that because the, the governor just had a, a commission um for recommendations to make buses safer. This is one of those that he had in there and it's something we've already put on all of our um buses in the district.
He skipped over Speak Up.
I did. Oh, I'm sorry. Speak Up uh is connected to Gaggle. So what, what Speak Up, what Speak Up does, that's like an anonymous tip line to where um students can either, students or families can put in a phone call or an email to that. The nice thing about Gaggle and Speak Up is that is monitored by human beings twenty-four seven. Twenty-four seven. So if something happens in the middle of the night where we get a report through Speak Up or a, a Gaggle alert, that could be what's called a potential student situation. An alert goes to principals, central office people um to make sure that, and, and it, and it sends you the contact information for that family. You don't have to go into Power School and look for it. It sends it to you and it's, and then we coordinate and say, who is calling this family? The great thing is in concert with it, here's how this works. It usually doesn't happen during the school day. That would be too easy, right? You know, because you can go down to the classroom, grab the kid. It usually happens at dismissal or, you know, late at night or something like that. So if it's happening recently, we had one that happened right around dismissal. And um the nice thing is when, so the student was gone. And, and but we have school resource officers. So we're able to turn to one of the officers and say, you know, the, the, and if we're not able to get a hold of a parent, we can send a police officer to the door without having to call a station or any type of thing like that. So being able to get those uh addressed very quickly. Um.
Yeah, the thing I think it's worth noting how it said that resource officer is more than likely that in the school and the student knows them, so it's not just a regular police officer showing up at the door. It's a familiar face.
Absolutely.
Clarity uh situation comes up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, a principal is notified, principal decide on course of action.
So actually, um notifications probably go to about five or six different people.
Okay.
Because we want that redundancy in there because, you know, what if the, 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 the principal's battery on their cell phone died and it's charging or something like that. So principal, assistant principal, uh directors at the, the central office, it goes out. So what's new? We have two things that, I'll touch on the one on the right first, since I just talked about bus arm, bus arms here. Uh, we, Adam House, another person who uh we believe does a great job in this district, he's our transportation director. He um is right now transitioning to a new bus routing software called TransFinder. I always mess that up. Um, we are going to be opening for our families next year uh their app called StopFinder. And, you know, two primary things that we, we like about this, one is the reason Mr. House is going to this is he does believe that it has uh an, an improved communication platform than our current software. So if you have a bus where a bus breaks down, um and kids are gonna be like getting home, or if there's uh a bus accident or whatever the reason, um he's able to more quickly communicate with families. Right now, many old school things where, you know, the, the, his, his office team will be picking up the phone and calling people. This is something, a communication that can happen much quicker. Um, we're also gonna provide bus route information. Now, one of the things I always want to clarify, we're not doing turn-by-turn. This isn't Uber where you're gonna sit there and watch the bus. Um, we don't believe that's safe. You know, we don't think anybody needs to know specifically where a bus is on. What parents typically wanna know, when's it gonna be here? And so they do have those um uh, what would it be called? The, the geo-fence. Thank you. Look at that. So we do have that geo-fencing where when a bus gets to a, a certain distance to you, you can get an alert. Um, it also will give you the ETA, kind of like when you punch in your GPS where you say you're gonna go and it says you should be there by, you know, six forty-five. And uh so that would be very helpful, especially on a wind chill day in the morning where you kind of wanna know, you know, I wanna only go like one or two minutes out before um uh that bus comes. And then that would be helpful as well. Um, the big one here is gonna be Parents Square. The nexus of this conversation came from seeing like in, in other school districts where you have inappropriate communications uh between staff and families or staff and, and students. Um, that's something that I wish I can sit here and tell you that can never, ever happen um here in Westlake. But that's naive. Um, and I think we need to um assume that it could. And, and so one of the things that makes us nervous is we have um staff appropriately, I'm not saying it's inappropriate. They're, they're, they are um using Remind, they're using different, they're using everybody. There are many people are using different platforms to communicate, okay? One of the issues with that is we as an administration do not have oversight over that. So, you know, with Parents Square, we can provide that safe space. It's safe for staff, it's safe for families, it's safe for students. And they can um send, uh, they can go into the app and send a message or do it from a PC. And students and parents can receive it how they choose to receive it. If they wanna receive it as a text, they can get it as a text. If they wanna receive it inside the app and see a little banner notification like you do, um, you can do that. One of the things we are setting as a default is that it will, it will be pushed through email. So you can choose whether or not you see it as a text or inside the app. But we are gonna set it that it does go through our email system. Now, the reason for it is back to the screen before about Gaggle. Because if it gets pushed through my email, if there's any questionable content or a message that is sent that we need immediate attention to, Gaggle then will pick it up. So Parents Square does not have the software to pick that up, but if we push it through our Gmail, our Gaggle system can catch that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So um, the, with all these conversations will then be archived um to where if we do get an alert and Gaggle, we'll be able to jump right in. If we get a phone call from a parent or a student, we're able to access immediately. We don't have to confiscate cell phones. We don't do anything like that. We're able to go right in and see it. And I think the third component is we get to tell people. You know, if any of my staff members are texting you, let me know. Because they shouldn't be doing it. This should be happening through this Parent Square and that could be a red flag. Could be innocent, but it could be a red flag as we go through there. Now, it's not in place yet. So if you're, you're, if you're, cause what you have, Brad, is sometimes you have, like a softball coach will have a team text right now. And we wanna get away from that.
Yep.
Now, that we don't have this in place yet, so if somebody watches this and, oh my God, my kid just got a text from a, a coach about the game, we, we understand, we're transitioning to this. Um, another doctor's a great thing. He's been working really hard to create a pilot and, and get all our data in here. So we are starting to pilot it now. Um, Springwise, are you looking at track? Is that who you're starting with?
I believe that's regarding girls.
Growth track. Um, so we are launching that here.
But it'll be rolled out then for the next full year.
Correct. Yeah, yep. Um, this will replace our current emergency messaging system. And then the final component is we also believe that this is gonna be a nice platform for family engagement. So it's not just gonna be your emergency communications and your texts. But it will be something kind of like a Facebook for Westlake Schools. Um, we can, we will be able to offer it to our um support organizations uh as well. So we, we're really excited about that.
One part that that I'm very excited about is especially the principal emails that come out.
Mm-hmm.
Where you have to click a link and then it pulls up this document that it, it's just, it's not very smartphone friendly and I think this is gonna be much more.
Agreed. Yeah, we think so too. We think so too. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump back into finance a little bit and this was, this was a slide that I put up last year. Um, and uh at the time, a, a big threat to uh the schools was House Bill One. And so we talked about that a little bit and fortunately, that did not go through. And we were really excited to do this. And the reason I put this on is because we also saw a little bit of a swing. Where um at the same time where we're advocating saying, you know, please don't pass this House Bill One, we were also um working with the Alliance for High Quality Education. We received uh support from Senator Dolan, support from Representative Sweeney um for our request to have our minimum funding go from five percent to ten percent. And that did pass. So the nice thing about this is as I was doing the state of the schools, we're saying, uh-oh, here's this threat um to where we could be losing funding. And then as we went through the process, we actually got into a position um from the support of our, our legislators to where we went from five percent to ten percent of our minimum funding. Now, I don't want, uh what I wanna make sure that I emphasize because Todd, I want Todd to correct me here, is that it's not a true ten percent. So our, we did not double the amount of money we were getting from the state. If you know anything about state funding, there's always strings attached. So when it is go, it does go from five percent to ten percent, um, it's not a true ten percent. It didn't truly double, but we do appreciate the fact that it went up. Could I get that right and drop?
That's correct.
Thank you. Gets mad at me. So especially what, you know, that's what, you wanna see a treasurer sweat, let your superintendent talk finance. Um, that's usually how it goes. Um, so this is, I, I totally ripped this off. This was uh the mayor in his state of the city. He used the dollar on the left and I think it's a great example because it is a good, this is when you talk about um how local entities are funded. You know, you're either gonna be looking at property taxes or income taxes. That's how it's done, right? So when you look at the property taxes, the Westlake City Schools gets forty-nine percent. So nearly half of the property taxes that people pay, um, that, that goes to the Westlake Schools. Five percent to the library, thirty-one percent to Cuyahoga County and fifteen percent to Wesley. The other revenue stream that, that happens is going to be your income taxes, which is on the right. That goes to the city of Wesley. Um, the reason I put that up there is there are um school districts in our area that actually get income tax. So, you know, you would see their dollar would be split up a little bit differently, um, because they not only receive property taxes, but they also receive income taxes. We don't get any of that.
And highway tax. I mean, I think they have like nine or ten different revenue sources to say that.
Well, but I'm just looking at it from, I'm looking at it from our taxpayers. When you, when you look at it locally, there's really two primary streams. It's either property taxes or local income taxes. And, and my point is not to talk about the money they get, I'm talking about the money we get. And so when you, when, and, and the primary one is the one on the left. I, I just put the slide, I put the House Bill One slide there uh uh right before this intentionally. And I talked about the, the move from five to ten percent intentionally because now when you look at that forty-nine percent, that eighty-five to ninety percent of our funding, the way we run our schools with the buildings, staff, buses, everything that we have, eighty-five to ninety percent of the funding is that forty-nine percent. So that's how we, that's how we operate. Our, we don't, we really don't get anything else. Um, um, other than, like I said, that money from, from the state of Ohio. We don't get income taxes, it is property taxes. And then, and then that funding in there as well. So I think that's kind of important to point out. Do you ask any questions or anything about that? You good? What's that?
Much bigger can be a crack of ours.
Yeah, exactly. So let's talk about this. When we look at challenges and opportunity, this is a, 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 a chart that was in um uh the Plain Dealer. And if it was at all eligible, um, what you'd be able to see here is that this is, this has um um, I'm gonna make it bigger here so I could see this. What this has is, this is the growth in Ed Choice expansion in our area and Ed Choice's vouchers. And so when you look at, and at the very bottom of that list is the Westlake City School District. So when you look at the students in district in twenty-two, twenty-three, living within our borders, so living in Westlake in twenty-two, twenty-three, that was re-receiving vouchers, there were forty-one of them. And then when you look at the students within our boundaries in twenty-three, twenty-four, it's five hundred and eighty-one. So you go from forty-one to five hundred and eighty-one students. Now those on the right is they're also showing the difference in our enrollment from one year to the next. So you're gonna see an increase of five hundred and forty-one additional vouchers being used, but a decrease of nineteen students in our district. So what we're seeing in here is the majority of, vast majority of the students who are utilizing um Ed Choice in Westlake were already in uh private schools is, is really what this is telling us. Um, not gonna get too much into it, but it connects to what I have going on in the next slide.
It very much is true in some of our neighboring districts also, Rocket River, uh Bay Village, you know, you're only seeing a small decrease.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So what does that mean for us? Well, let's look at our enrollment. Um, and this is an important slide as well. And when you look at our enrollment, the, the top left is the elementary school, underneath it is the intermediate school, to the top right is the middle school and then to the bottom right is the high school. Um, we, we saw our, and, and, and actually, if you look at the top left in the elementary school and the bottom right in the high school, they kind of mirror each other. So it's, it's those schools you see a pronounced drop um between fifteen and sixteen. That's between two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, drifting into two thousand seventeen is when you saw a significant drop in, in uh enrollment. Um, first guess was it labor issues? I don't know. You know, that was right about the time of the strike as well. Did, so I don't know, for those of you who were here fifteen, sixteen, I don't know what you would kind of um contribute that to, attribute that to, uh but that's the reality. And, and when you do look at it and, and when you look at that drop and you look at where we are now, um, and even when you look at the middle school, in two thousand thirteen, you had six hundred and nineteen students, in two thousand fourteen, you have four hundred and eighty. So you're looking at, you know, class sizes in two thousand thirteen of, you know, let's say um about three hundred and ten students. And then, you know, when you look in twenty twenty-four, you're looking at two hundred and forty. So you're seeing that significant drop that's, that's happening with the enrollment. Um, but we are pretty stable after that. And, and, and so the reason I put the Ed Choice is Ed Choice hasn't hit us yet. You know, will it further impact our enrollment? I'm not sure. Um, but I could tell you that as of now, it only impacted about nineteen students. Our biggest drop-off happened probably about fifteen, sixteen, um, but we haven't seen that significant of a drop since. So what does that mean? So why do I have this screen up and why would I talk about enrollment? Because we also have to look at it and we try and be those good fiscal stewards. And one of the things that we know is that um in the next, this year and the next two years. So when you take, if you count this year and you count it to be three years total, this year, next year and the year after, we have thirty-two certified staff members eligible for retirement in these next three years. Thirty-two. That's very significant. Um, then when you look at the next five years after that, we have an additional thirty-nine eligible for retirement. So when you look at these, this year and the next two years, you have thirty-two eligible certified staff members and then the next five years after that, additional thirty-nine. That's very significant. So this is gonna be one of those times where we really have to have some of those conversations about attrition. You know, when we are seeing, so you have to balance things. What opportunities do we wanna continue to provide? Um, and then where can we maybe not replace some people because we are seeing that drop in enrollment? And how do we right-size that? So that's gonna be a challenge and opportunity as we go you know, forward over these next five years to be able to do that. Because if you don't do that, um, pick up the newspaper, you're seeing school districts that they are doing rifts and heavy layoffs right now. And if you don't manage your staff now, it'll catch up to you at some point. And so that's why we have to look at it and say, there's Ed Choice. Here's what our enrollment has done and here's the opportunity that's in front of us with thirty-two over three years, an additional thirty-nine, five years after that. How can we surgically do this as opposed to doing something drastic? So that's why I put that up there. I thought it made sense. Um, so I, I went with that.
Are you moving on from this slide?
I am.
Um, do you have any comments with the upward slope in elementary and intermediate?
I don't. I mean, I don't know, I don't know the reasons behind it. Um, I, Liz usually has her, her ear to the ground.
One, one of the reasons in the elementary, and I'll, I'll speak to that.
Okay.
Real briefly is, cause I've looked at it uh as well as, we have uh grown our preschool program
Okay.
uh over the past Uh, over the past, uh, few years, and that has shown, uh, the increase. I have not been able to explain. Uh, the, a little, uh, uh, uptick in the intermediate school, but, uh, the elementary is specifically tied to the preschool program.
Yeah.
One of the big things I've noticed, particularly even in my neighborhood, in. While there's been this phenomenal real estate market going on, um. There has not been downsizing that's been happening with a lot of families. Uh, where not only are their kids grown and flown, like they're. They had their own children, they live in their own homes elsewhere, and, um, there's not the downsizing that you would have expected. Of some families, but then at the same time, you're now starting to see, um, turnover happening. Where it is, we're younger families coming in. I want to say I've got like six homes just on my street with young children. That have moved in within, within the last year, so.
I was chatting with my neighbor, uh, a little bit about that.
Yes.
And, um, in, in, in our neighborhood, we, we see that as a lot of young families living in.
Babies and.
With lots of kids.
Exactly. So it'll be very curious to see as our numbers.
Increase.
Increase at the elementary. And there was a little bit of a bubble, if I remember correctly, I want to say in like fifteen. Where I remember there was just high enrollment across the board.
Okay.
Um, and that's one of the reasons why there was that drop off at the high school level, um. I remember that because we had just very large classes. Oh, when we were at the LBMS, where, where there was just that many more students and it just was a drop off where it was just. Because of the birth rate and homes being built. And it was a bubble manageable comparative to a lot of these other districts where it's, you know. Huge homes.
Yeah.
Going in.
Yeah.
With an increase in preschool enrollment, any further thoughts there as far as?
No, I don't know if that's going to hold on. I think we are making, um, some adjustments, adjustments to our preschool program that may. Uh, manage that enrollment a little bit. Yep. Any other questions? I only have one slide left. That's the good news. All right. So one slide left. When, this is another thing that, um, I talked about, uh, previously as well when it comes to substitute coverage. Again, I, I don't want to sit here and, and just have this whole, uh, uh, young Ian interconnectedness. Um, uh, presentation here, but everything we do is connected. And, and I kind of liked this as well, where, um, we did talk about sub coverage and. When we look at finding substitute teachers, you need substitute teachers when there's a vacancy. Whatever the reason for the vacancy, whether it's an illness, uh, a personal day, um, a professional development, any of those type of things that happen. Um, we, we, we create a vacancy. It's not that we don't worry about our vacancies in the high school and the other buildings. It's that they are more significant. It's more of a significant issue in the elementary school than any other, um, school in our district. Because when, when we can't find a substitute. We have to grab an intervention specialist, um, someone who works with our students who work with English language learners. English language deficiencies, um, Title One reading gifted. We need to pull services from another group of students to cover a class. So it is very significant. We can't do period coverage like you can. When you're in a, in, um. When you have third period off, it's like, Joe, can you cover for Barb third period because you're off? You can do period coverage to provide that. In the elementary school. You take away services from another student in order to fill that. It's a huge deal. Um, so we did take a multiple strategy approach that included building subs. I'll talk about a couple of the other strategies in a moment, but we did, uh, you know, use the building subs. And as we monitored the effectiveness and, and found, um, that if we did, this is, by the way, this is quarter two. This is, uh, from our second quarter. Um, this is the data we had. If we did not implement building subs, our fill rate would have been seventy percent. Um. With the building subs, the fill rate went up to eighty-seven percent. Um, we want it to be a hundred percent. Uh, that would be our goal with this, but it's a significant change. Now, when we talk, also talk about the challenges, I have to put this in perspective as well. Is that, you know, the, the, the governor, which, you know, he, he's come out and literacy is something he wants significant focus on. He's focusing on the science of reading and they're making mandates. So the state has mandated. That all kindergarten through twelfth grade ELA teachers must implement science of reading strategies next year. And so we've been training for these past couple of years, um. K-four teachers have completed eighteen hours of professional development and need an additional twenty-two hours next year. They also have. All K through twelve licensed staff must complete professional development. That's what PD is. Ranging from seven to twenty-two hours. People who don't even teach ELA, or I mean, K, K through twelve, all K through twelve. Um, need to be trained for seven to twenty-two hours. The reason I put these two things on here, when are you going to do that? You can't mandate summer, can't bring them in weekends. This kind of thing leads to more vacancies. And so as we're battling a, uh, uh, an issue of getting coverage for the day. We have to be creative because there's more and more requirements of training that we need to do in here. Um, which is why I put that second bullet there. When I say a multiple strategy approach, we are very grateful. And also. Earlier on, I, I give credit to our bargaining units. We worked with our teachers and the board approved a memorandum of understanding where we've added three professional days. We understand that can be a burden on our families at times, but with the level of requirements. That we currently have to train our staff, if we didn't have those days. It would be just more and more vacancies. And so Jane, Paul, Amanda, um, um, our, our team. Has really put a lot of time in to taking these professional development days. And getting some of these required trainings in, because when we do them on a day like that where we don't have students, I don't have to pull anybody. And so that's why when we talk about some of the challenges, we're excited. We're, you know, we, we like the, what we're seeing in literacy. Believe me, we're advocates of literacy. Um, but when you look at some of these, um, requirements that are placed on us with the challenges we're facing in substitutes. Um, that's, that's an issue, and it's something that we, we want to continue to, to work on.
And every school in the state of Ohio has those requirements. Is that true?
It's true. It is.
Does, uh, the, uh, phonics included in the teaching strategies? Are we?
I believe so.
Because last week I got handed. A whole packet. And he's a retired Cleveland Clinic doctor who keeps tabs on the school system of California is restarting. The, the teaching of phonics.
Oh, we have phonics. We do foundation.
Well, that's what I told him. I said, we do have phonics, but I didn't know to what. Extent.
If that is a, it is a, it is a part of.
It is a part of the, the, okay.
And I'm surprised I'm not getting a text from Amanda who's probably watching this. But yeah.
Um. From what I'm hearing from the community, the professional development days are very much being utilized. By parents. For college visits or different, it's not just turning things into four-day vacations. When we're able to do that, but really a lot of people have been amazed by how much they've been using them in ways, creative ways.
Good. Yes, sir. You did.
So the chief, the chief, thank you, Amanda. She said, we, we do have to choose a program approved by the state that includes phonics.
Okay. All right. There you go. I knew it. So, um. Oh, wait a minute. There she is. Yes, explicit instructions. We have to, okay, same thing. All right, um, that's it. So when we, when we look at our state of the schools, um, and we think about the Westlake City Schools at the very end. Um, this is what it's about. This is what we do. You know, when we look at, um, the, the, the students, the experience. And, and what they get being associated with the Westlake City School Districts, we're very proud of it. We're proud of what we offer. We're proud of our families. Proud of our staff, proud of our students. Um. When I think about state of the schools, you know, you hear people say, you know, the state of whatever organization you are is very strong. Um, I truly believe that the state of the Westlake Schools is, is very strong and we are well positioned. Um, to not only have success today, but success in the future. So with that, I will end and answer any questions.
Superb. Well, your board is very proud of you and all the work that everyone does on staff. So thank you very much. Uh, for bringing the Westlake City Schools to where we are today, and your presentation was very thorough. Um. What keeps you up at night?
Um, uh, you know what? I, I have to say, not much.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm fortunate with, uh, I, you've heard me mention some of these folks sitting here today as directors or administrators. Or staff members. Um, we are really, really fortunate. I have, I have a tremendous team. That they work really hard and, and not only do they work hard, but they're focused and they're focused in the right areas.
A, a question I have, I think of nine years ago and, uh, Mr. Zagre, we, we talked about how technology has become. An ever more important part of education. And nine years ago, uh, and tell me if this is a fair, uh, measuring stick. I think about the, uh, on-ramp, um, to future technology and think about it nine years ago and. Just think about, um, the, the on-ramp that you shared with us and. And on-ramp, uh, as far as, um, i- if you look at. Oh, just say a, a long arm, uh, a long on-ramp being, hey, we're, we're very prepared. Um, for the future of technology for students, for the entire district, what have you. And you look at it, say, nine years ago where we were. Um, any, any measuring stick, um, comments that you may have? Where are we today on ramp wise compared to, say, nine years ago?
We're in pretty good shape.
Okay.
Nine years ago, ten years ago, we were just building our wireless infrastructure as our new schools were coming on board. We were renovating, uh, infrastructure at existing elementaries at the time. Um, as, as well as Dover, the media, or Parkside. Um, so, um, infrastructuralized, we're in really good shape. Um. Budget-wise, we're in, in very good shape. Um. You guys have, have provided funds where we needed them and you've been able to make good, sound purchasing decisions. And I think we're in, we're in pretty good, keep saying it, okay, pretty much shape.
Superb. And I, I think about that funding as well, and, and I know you are out there continuing to, um. Uh, in a, in a great way, just seek out funding, uh, for that technology and, and it's there and, um. You, you, you do it in a very prudent way. Uh, that's great for taxpayers. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you to you.
Okay, well, moving right along, we are up to board committee reports. So do we have anything for? For legislative side?
I know you met with, uh, Representative Sweeney regarding the, um, potential legislation on, uh, internet safety and. Uh, they've not gaggle.
Mm-hmm.
And it sounded like that was a productive conversation.
It was and, and, uh.
I talked to Gail Manning, I talked to Gail Manning about it too, and, and she. Sent me an email which I forwarded to you. She, she's pretty, uh, confident that, uh, it won't interfere with what we're.
Yeah.
With our side. And I think it was inadvertently that when it was first, uh, made into the bill that they didn't realize.
I have a feeling that was a situation.
Yeah, it wasn't an intentional, uh.
I had to Google God.
And Pete, did you get an alert on Brad?
Oh, anything else?
I've got a, it covers it.
Okay, student achievement. You kind of covered it with, well, you covered our athletic achievement. Um. Anything on that? Okay, superintendent committee reports?
I did just meet with Neola and I will have an update, policy update.
Okay.
It's a very minor one.
And, uh, treasurer committee.
Now, the treasurer Hopkins is, uh, hosting a meeting of the finance committee on the twentieth.
Oh, okay. And John, John knows. Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, board comments? I have a question for you because somebody, uh, asked me this and I really didn't know. Is there anyone in the school, because I always thought it was the SROs, is there anyone in the school that? Finds out. If a student is not living in the city of Wesley.
Yes.
Okay, I, I, because I've been hearing that there might be multiple kids that are not living in Wesley. So, so who, who does that?
We do utilize SROs, counselors, social workers, principals. It's not, we don't have a.
Not one person, but it is being looked into if you get notice of that. Okay.
We do.
Any other board comments?
As I, as I think about the, uh, Million Dollar Woman, I think of, um, you know, the, the roof, I think of the roof. And I do know that, that I believe that that weather event was a, uh, very micro-regional kind of a thing. And, and the question is, should, you know, would, would other buildings? Benefit from?
Yeah, so I had our claims adjuster with at all of our.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Well, I know for less that with Caddicar, they got a all-new siding and a whole new group. Yeah, and you did too. Okay. And I think a lot of your neighbors.
The entire neighborhood.
Okay, wow.
Hilarious driving through settlers.
But I also think we need to like deduct some money from, um, Liz's total. Because I, I, I failed to mention in my presentation that we do have to pay a thousand dollars.
Oh, do I need to write a check?
Please.
Couple of things I want to touch upon. Um, it was great to see company D on Fox Eight last Friday.
Yes.
Uh, Friday morning, I believe they performed three times. Um, I had an opportunity to chaperone the women's ensemble to Alaria High School on Friday evening for their, uh, competition or. Uh, uh, my daughter was trying to explain it to me and I still, you know, I'd figure out exactly how it is with choir, how they're scored and everything, but. Um, along with that, um, I attended the fifth grade, uh, introduction, uh, for new students with Mr. Shaw. Uh, I think Mr. Wilson was there about a week ago. My son's going into. What, what we call now LBMS, but in my day, he was coming from LBMS. So, um. And then one thing that, uh, I forwarded on to all the, the members of the board, including the superintendent and treasurer was that, um. The Parkside site was on planning commission's, uh, agenda last Monday. Uh, it did pass with a couple revisions to what was forwarded to you. Apparently they want to move the pavilion more central to the, the fields that are going to be on the site. And they want to enlarge the pickup area, um, in the parking lot for, uh, families that are dropping off and picking up, uh. Uh, uh, kids and athletes. Um, so what happens now is that, uh, with those recommendations. Uh, the planning commission is a recommending body, so they've recommended it on to the city council and. City council may take it up or they may, uh, send it back to the recommission to go over what changes have been made. So. Uh, right now it's in city council's hands. So, and that's what I have.
I had the opportunity to, um, help out with the O M years at the high school on Friday afternoon and Saturday morning. And truly, the facilities looked amazing. I even got comments from a number of, um. Parents from other districts who had never been in those parts of facility. They were just absolutely amazed how well. The buildings looked and just the layout of the building worked so well and. Thousands of people, students were there. I don't know the full number of them, and I know it's hard on the staff. Cause I want to say the last, uh, group goes at eleven o'clock or some crazy time on Friday night and then they start again. And Fri- uh, Saturday morning at eight AM, so. But it was really wonderful.
Did the source come in?
Us, I believe they got all ones. We superior rated, so.
I, I, I think it was beneficial for them to have it at, at our whole school because of the familiarity with the.
Home field advantage.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I was gonna say, we helped it like three years in a row back until twenty eighteen. So it's been a while, so.
I also got a call from a group that wants to hire Company D for their entertainment in the future. So they asked, she said. How do we, how do we, what board member do we talk to? And I said, what do you, what do you want? She says, we want to hire Company D. I said. I can give you that information. So I don't know if they saw. Right, right.
Mrs. Butler does a great job.
But that's, I gave Mrs. Butler's name.
Uh, and the good fortune on Friday was at a local fish fry at St. Clair. Uh and the good fortune on Friday, I was at a local fish fry at Saint Clarence. And a young man who was volunteering at the fish fry sat down at the table, he was taking a break. Sitting with a bunch of old timers like myself and um. The table was just inquiry, they they didn't know him, he sat down, number one, he was volunteering, which was awesome. He was a student at Wesley High Schools. Uh the table went on to question him, you know, tell me about your coursework, uh what do you do? Um he was part of the Company D presentation on the news. Um is going to be in Hello, Dolly, that's coming up, and they were so impressed with his coursework, the fact that he's a volunteer. Um he's extracurricular and it's just a lot of fun, like getting unexpected accolades for Wesley High Schools.
Okay, here. Anyone else? Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn?
Um we have executive session, adjourn to exec.
Oh, sorry, motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
To adjourn to executive session for the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of employee or official. At seven thirty-one PM, Purna?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Luzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And no action will be taken. We are turned.